I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Institute of thought of the United States of America, considered a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kratsi would please call the roll.
Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Ruhl.
Here.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
Non-members present.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have one under personnel, item seventeen on page fourteen, please insert hereby reject.
On what page was that, fourteen?
On page fourteen, item seventeen.
Anything else? I need to, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as corrected.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive session held May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report and Ms. O'Rourke.
We are pleased to be able to share the following items of good news with you this evening. Our Bethel Park High School DECA students had a very successful trip to the International Career Development Conference in Orlando, bringing home one second place, one top twenty finalist, eleven awards of excellence, and two medallion awards. The top competitor at the event was junior Caleb Shook who finished in second place in the Human Resources Management Event, earned an award of excellence for meeting all standards of performance, and two medallion awards. What makes this accomplishment so great is that over two hundred students complete in each event. Caleb is the highest finishing Bethel Park High School student since Mrs. Smuler took over the program. Congratulations to Caleb and to all of this year's international winners. Bethel Park High School inducted fourteen new members into the Quill and Skrull International Honorary Society for High School Journalists and gave an award of honor to an outstanding freshman. Students who are selected for this have demonstrated excellent work this past school year either in the Hawkeye Online Newspaper, the Beacon Yearbook, Blackhawk TV, or the Vernissage Literary Magazine. Congratulations to inductees Joe Baba, Alyssa Dixon, Leslie Folino, Megan Cassunius, Parker Luria, Alex Magnu, Jay McCann, Alex Knoll, Sarah Pelus, Tyler Schultz, Troy Sigafus, Alexis Smith, Gabrielle Straub, and Olivia Westfall. Congratulations also to freshman Anastasia Williams who wasn't eligible for induction but merited special recognition for her work with the newspaper and yearbook. Earlier this school year, we shared with you the story of Bethel Park High School science students working together to design honeycombs using Tinkercad and the three D printers in their classrooms to help honeybees to conserve energy. Science teachers Mr. Winchell and Mr. O'Brien submitted their students' work into the Research Experience for Teachers Design Competition at Pitt. Our students earned four awards in the competition, including first place in the science and math category, second place in the best project category, third place in the best design award. Congratulations to students Evan Yoder, Ashton Losanka, Camden Wade, Kelvin Walsh, Brian Pauli, Maggie Browning, and Aiden Tar. The students' designs have now found a home in the beehive that Mr. Winchell has at his home for over forty thousand bees. Bethel Park High School inducted twenty-five new members into the French National Honor Society and recognized thirty-seven returning members. Students who maintained a ninety percent average in French during the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year were eligible for induction. Congratulations to all of these students and their commitment to learning a foreign Four Bethel Park High School students received the top-of-the-shop award from the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education for the first semester of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year, and two students received it for the second semester. Congratulations to first semester awardees Samuel Delancy, Joshua Guffey, Cara Merkel, and Monica Forte, and second semester awards to Samuel Delancy and Anthony Clays. Students received this award based on the outstanding conduct, work ethic, attendance, and work proficiency. In more Steel Center news, six Bethel Park High School students received the extra effort award for the third quarter and four students received the award to the fourth quarter in recognition of their outstanding attitude, work ethic, attendance, and dependability. Congratulations to third quarter award winners Sam Delancy, Randy DePescual, Vanetta Belgrave, Anthony Klaus, Corey Wassman, and Rachel Yannion. And fourth quarter winners Griffin Hunter, Randy DePescual, Diane Krebs, and Kaitlyn Chickwack. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park St. Clair presented technology awards to Bethel Park High School senior Christopher Toth and junior Austin Linz at a dinner held recently at St. Clair Country Column. The students were nominated by Bethel Park High School Technology Education teachers Mr. Schutstutske and Mr. Smok in recognition for their outstanding efforts in the engineering classes offered at the high school. Congratulations to both of these students for the work they are doing to prepare for their futures. Four Bethel Park High School students were named to the directors list at the Parkway Technical Center for the third quarter of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. Congratulations to Emily Bosco, Rachel Craven, Madison Cochran, and Alexa Vickar. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School seniors Gavin Julian Barr and Michaela Crum who were the recipients of the Shazda Award for the South Hills Area School Districts Association. Each year, every Shazda member high school recognizes two students who have worked hard to overcome obstacles in their lives and succeed not only in school but also in life. They received their awards last month at Shazda's annual spring conference at South Point. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School senior Lauren Fusca its May Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary recognizes a Bethel Park High School student for outstanding commitment to school and community. Lauren was recognized for her leadership as the president of the Principals Advisory Council for Students and her volunteer work at a local dance studio. The Bethel Park High School Music Department once again has a terrific spring trip this year to the festivals of music in Chicago, earning fifteen awards, including seven first-place superior awards, one first-place excellent award, one second-place superior award, one second-place excellent award, three best overall awards, one best section award, and the Esprit de Corse Award which is given to the school whose students demonstrate outstanding character and behavior. Congratulations to all of our students and teachers for another successful trip. Our Bethel Park High School ninth-grade music students also had a successful spring trip to the Music Showcase Festival at Hershey, bringing home five awards, including the prestigious Esprit de Corse Award for outstanding behavior and character. We are proud of all of our students, not only for their talents but also because of their great representation of Bethel Park on state and national stages. We hope you had the opportunity to attend the Art Fest and Steam Expo that was held at Bethel Park High School earlier this month. The event featured artwork from all eight Bethel Park schools as well as student demonstrations and interactive activities featuring some student-created steam favorites such as the Spin Art Bike. A thank you goes to Mr. Wallish and the district's art teachers for their support of this important community showcase event. Bethel Park High School students had a great time at this year's Stars Program Prom, which is held at the Gateway Clipper. Bethel Park students enjoyed this special event with over two hundred students from fifteen area school districts, which is designed to celebrate the individuality of these students while also promoting inclusion and awareness. The students arrived at the prom in style thanks to a generous parent who chartered a limo bus to transport all of them to and from the event. Dr. Pascarella, Dr. Jen Santi, Mr. Vilani, and I had the pleasure of meeting with several top leaders of the United States Army STEM Fields to inquire about possible partnerships, opportunities that could benefit our students, including college and career fairs as well as access to the many Army resources. The Army was visiting other schools in the area and they mentioned that they were very impressed with the honor that the Bethel Park School District gives the Armed Forces, including the fact that Bethel Park High School has the first school they were aware of that intentionally honors its graduates who will be entering the Armed Forces during commencement ceremony. They were also impressed with our wall of honor at the high school, featuring graduates who served or are currently serving in the Armed Forces. It was a very fruitful discussion and we look forward to growing our connection and partnership with the Army to give our students everything we can to help them to reach whatever goal they have, whether it be college, the trades, work, or of course, the military. It is my pleasure to share two items of good news about our high school forensics team. First, the Blackhawk Forensics Tournament held annually in February has now been certified by a Tournament of Champions bid competition. This means that students who complete and place in our tournament can earn one of the two golden tickets that they will need to complete at the Tournament of Champions at the University of Kentucky, which is one of the elite tournaments in the country. Even higher than some of our other national tournaments our students qualify for, we are the second school in Pennsylvania to be TOC certified. The other school is in the eastern part of the state, and second, and second, our forensic team sponsor, Bethel Park High School teacher Christine Robb, has been selected as one of two region coaches for the World Team Competition that will be held in Dallas in June. Ms. Robb will be coaching five students from Western Pennsylvania area high schools, including Bethel Park High School junior Caleb Shook, in the prestigious competition. Ms. Robb is to be commended for the work she has done with the forensics team since she took over the program three years ago, to elevate the program's reputation and to provide additional upper-level competition opportunities for our students. Independence Middle School students in Team Unity are learning about the plight of homeless children in the Allegheny County for their year-long service learning project. This year, they collected over three hundred new and gently-used children's books for donation to homeless shelters in Allegheny County. Through a partnership with the Homeless Children's Education Fund, last Friday, they participated in a stand-up art installation in Market Square where they held up the paper mask in front of their faces and stood in silence for fifteen minutes to bring awareness to the more than four thousand homeless children in Allegheny County. The students say their participation in this event brings them a whole new perspective of the situation. We thank our teachers for helping them to understand that homelessness impacts more than older people and it also impacts families as well. A team of Neil Armstrong Middle School fifth-grade gifted students won the second annual Allegheny County Envirethon Competition in the grades four and five division. The students competed against twenty teams in this competition that centered around environmental topics and if issues such as soil, aquatics, forestry, wildlife, carnivans, and pollination. Congratulations to Colonel Winham, Callie DeGobon, Harley Dale, Jason Kerbel, and Sadie Nelson. Also, the NAMM sixth-grade team finished in ninth place in the grades six through eight division. If you recall, the district last month gave an official partnership with the WQED to participate in its kindness initiative of all of our schools to promote shared values of respect and caring. Kindness trees are at our middle and elementary schools where students can write the acts of kindness they've either done or had done to them on a paper leaf which is hung on the trees. As you can see from the photos, the trees are rather full, as I like to say, you can never have too much kindness. Forty-one Bethel Park third graders participated in the seventh annual Rotary Club of Bethel Park third grade spelling bee. This year's winner was Memorial third grader Michael Blessing who received a two hundred and fifty-dollar Amazon gift card from the Rotary for his accomplishment. Finishing in second place and receiving an a hundred and fifty-dollar Amazon gift card was Penn third grader Magnolia Cavanero. Franklin third grader Sam Bell received a fifty-dollar Amazon gift card for finishing in third place. The spelling bee is a natural tie-in to the Rotary's annual gift of dictionaries to all of our third-grade students, and we thank the Rotarians for their continued generosity and support of our students. A group of elementary gifted students finished in third place at the Elementary Calciof Competition which was held at Brentwood High School. Congratulations to Penn third grader Patrick Gaffky and Lincoln fourth graders Riley Fillage and Caleb Crawford. Additionally, Patrick finished in second place in the individual competition. Congratulations to all of these students. For the second consecutive year, Memorial gifted students won the Bethel Park Elementary Gifted Challenge Cup. Every year, all of the district's gifted students get together at Washington for an afternoon of friendly competition and a variety of games, puzzles, and steam challenges with the team that amasses the most points earning the coveted Gifted Challenge Cup. Congratulations to Memorial students and to all the students who look forward to participating in this annual tradition. You have until Friday, May thirty-first, to cast your vote for the Reader's Choice Award for this year's WQED Writers Contest, which features five Bethel Park Elementary students as finalists. Congratulations to Lincoln students Jack Ford, Olivia Anderson, and Alexis King, and to Franklin students Sidney Collander and Adele Samanoff, who is among the finalists in this year's competition. They will all be honored at a special reception to be held on May thirty-first at WQED. You can read all of their stories and vote for your favorite on the WQED Writers Contest website. Congratulations and good luck to all of these students. Abraham Lincoln Elementary second-grade students in Mrs. Liberto's room had the opportunity to participate in a county-wide steam activity to kick off Remake Learning Days earlier this month. The students traveled to a McKeesport Elementary School where they participated in two steam activities, one using wands and an interactive smartboard, and the other where they made gliders. While the Lincoln students were in McKeesport, the McKeesport students visited Lincoln to participate in some of the steam activities that the Lincoln students participate in during the school's quarterly Makers Mindset afternoons. Then, both sets of students went to the Carnegie Museum of Art to participate in a rocket-launching activity with students from across the county. It was a great day of hands-on learning. Franklin fourth-grade students were also involved in a Remake Learning Day activity. The school received funding for the students to work on a simple-circuit steam project with art teachers Mrs. Johnson that centered around artist and author Eric Carle's books, The Very Hungry Caterpillar and The Very Lonely Firefly. Students learned about the life cycle of these two insects and used copper tape and a diode light and batteries to make the card that would light up. Memorial third-grade students in Mrs. Sossel's room participated in a project called The Best Part of Me, which is designed to help boost their self-confidence. The students were assigned to write about the best part of themselves, and Mrs. Sossel took photos of the students. The students glued the photos to their essays and it made for a beautiful display in the memorial hallway. Washington kindergarten students had fun in the library with the Beebots. After reading the story Kitten's First Full Moon, the students were challenged to code a robot bee to travel a grid to locate the kitten on the moon. The students really got into the activity, cheering and supporting one another as they collaborated and problem-solved to get the bee to move to the cat. Fridays are STEM days at William Penn, where the students are utilizing the STEM kits the district purchased from Camp Invention to make everyday gadgets. Through this hands-on activity, students learn how to brainstorm, create either a trapping contraption of a room cleaning gadget, learn how to protect their inventions with a utility patent, explore three D imaging, develop product packaging, and calculate the cost of goods as well as make effective buying decisions. All Bethel Park Elementary Schools got these STEM kits, but each school's kit has a different theme, such as wearable gear, living spaces, high-tech machines, and playful designs. Two members of the Lincoln teaching staff were recently recognized by the Pennsylvania Chapter of the National State Teachers of the Year Reading Specialist Rebecca Seawald and Instructional Support Teacher Rose D. Gregorio were presented with the Apple Award in recognition of their exceptional efforts in teaching, coaching, and other efforts that support educational excellence. Mrs. Seawald and Mrs. D. Gregorio strive to make a positive difference in the lives of their students, and we congratulate them on this well-deserved recognition. They were both nominated by Franklin fourth-grade teacher and two thousand seventeen PA Teacher of the Year finalist Catherine Mucci. Our Special Service Department hosted a Parents Guardian Workshop on May twentieth that focused on inclusive education supports and strategies, including a viewing of the inspirational movie Intelligent Lives, and an update on the Best Buddies Program at the high school. Four parent workshops are scheduled for next school year and the dates are on the screen, as well as our federal programs' Parent Night. All Bethel Park parents and staff are welcome to attend any and all of these informative events. The Bethel Park School District is proud to be a live-well Allegheny school district. It was great to meet Allegheny County Health Department Director Dr. Karen Hacker at the Simmons Park Playground dedication earlier this month and to receive this signage naming us as partner for this health initiative. We are dedicated to promoting proper nutrition, exercise, and fitness activities to all of our students and staff. We will be doing a complete recap of our spring sports season next month once everything wraps up, but we wanted to send out a special congratulations this evening to Bethel Park High School sophomore Emily Carter, who was the WPIAL champion in the sixteen-hundred and thirty-two-hundred meters and broke the state record on her way to winning the thirty-two-hundred meters. Emily will be attending our June twenty-fifth meeting for special recognition of her outstanding year in cross-country, indoor track, and outdoor track. And believe it or not, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Student Government.
So, the big thing that Student Government did this past month was the Staff Appreciation Week, in which we really tried to give back to the staff for all they did for us. So, we had flowers and breakfast for our teachers, we had coffee and donuts for our bus drivers and crossing guards, and we also had a luncheon for our lunch ladies, for all they do for us.
So, and then at the conclusion of Staff App, we had a big luncheon for all of the teachers, and that comprised of Permani sandwich. So, we had a Pittsburgh theme for the entire week, and that luncheon comprised of Permani sandwiches, we had a Porigi food truck outside, and then dessert was popcorn from Pittsburgh Popcorn Company and Eden Park cookies. So, Staff App Week in general was a huge success. I remember one of the secretaries from the Activities Office, Mrs. P., said it was the best one she had, and she's been working at school for over two decades. So, it was a huge success. And then, also, that same week, we had a therapy dog come in from Animal Friends, and that worked out really well for everyone. All the students that got to see it were really happy about it, and we're hoping that by doing that, we can set a precedent to do it more in the future, because it was something that we'd never done before, something that no organization in the school had ever done before. And since it was a huge success, we're hoping that now that we know how it works, we can do it more in the future to benefit the students.
You guys have had great ideas this year, from the charging stations and now that. I like the Pittsburgh theme too, that was a good idea. Thank you. PTA, PTO Council.
My printer was cooperating with me today, so I have to read it by email. So, this is the PTO, PTA School Board Report, Abraham Lincoln Elementary, it says that twenty-eighteen-
Can you move closer to the microphone?
Yeah, sure. Sorry.
Or move the microphone closer to you.
Is that a little-
That's good.
That's a little better?
Thank you.
All right. So, Abraham Lincoln Elementary says that twenty-eighteen-nineteen was a great school year. They wrapped up by having fun with their annual field day at Cool Springs, and there have been many end-of-the-year activities topped off by the fourth-grade field trip to the Challenger Space Center on May twenty-eighth. Benjamin Franklin Elementary. Ben Franklin, the month of May has been exciting and everyone is working hard on making it one to remember for sure. They kicked off the month with participating in Kids of Steel. The PTO purchased their participating kids a bright orange t-shirt to represent that day. Ben had another successful book fair for the spring session in early May, including the first-ever evening shopping session for families which everyone seemed to enjoy. PTO members approved to help their fourth-grade teachers purchase incubators and web cameras to hatch chicks, and last week, the entire school got to enjoy watching them hatch. They even shared an evening bedtime story with Mrs. Mucci and the new chicks on Facebook. Ben Franklin finalized their new board members for twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, and the fourth-grade committee members are in final prep stages for graduation and celebrations. As Ben Franklin closes out another school year, the PTO is quite busy with Olympic Day scheduled five-twenty-four, and their final spirit night Kona Ice Truck will be making its rounds in the neighborhood on the last day of school. Have a great summer. George Washington Elementary, in April, George Washington School was awarded a grant from BP USC Lion Club to purchase a bench, and Washington, George Washington PTO donated funds to the school for another bench. They're eagerly awaiting the delivery and installation of these two benches and adding them to the wonderful playground at the school. George Washington PTO showed their appreciation for the staff during the week of April twenty-ninth to May first with several different events, including a yogurt parfait bar, popcorn bar, as well as wonderful luncheon. May has been busy with the second graders going to the symphony, the first graders going to the National Avary on a field trip, and the kindergartners visiting Triple B Farms. The students also participated in the annual sports day with a lot of games and obstacle courses, and welcomed several different local mascots and high school students for the annual tug-of-war. They're going to close out their year with a family fun night on May thirty-first with more games, food truck, Rita's Ice DJ, and a wonderful Chinese auction. Memorial Elementary, in April, Memorial participated in Memorial Movers and Kids of Steel which led up to the Kids Marathon. We also had our family spring bingo event where families come together for some bingo fun snacks and a toy raffle for kids. In May, we held our annual fun fair with games, basket raffles, inflatables, and snacks. The PTA was able to donate a hundred dollars to the Rovers family giving-back projects Miles from Sean. Memorial also held the annual talent show at IMS on the fifteenth- Memorial also held the annual talent show at IMS on the 15th and the third grade Pittsburgh party, including local history, traditions, food, and fame, as well as the famous Pittsburgh pierogi race. Mr. Chels did not win. The PTA also sponsored the fourth grade field trip to PNC Park, the first grade field trip to Carnegie Science Center, and the second grade field trip to the zoo. Today, the weather cooperated for Field Day, whose theme was different children's books, and on the Thursday, the fourth grade is having their annual state fair, where they present their state project information by having a luau theme party. Memorial will continue the Smiles from Sean quarter drive for the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh Foundation through the end of the week. Neil Armstrong Middle School. NAMM's PTO offered many learning opportunities this month, including class team field trips and an upcoming aviary presentation. Fun days for both fifth and sixth grade were held along with Rita's Italian Ice and Kona Teachers were celebrated with Teachers Appreciation Day lunch. NAMM students raised a total of $2,758.60 for the Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh Foundation through Smiles from Sean's coin drive. The winning fifth grade team, Millennium, and sixth grade homeroom number 66 will each be awarded a pizza party. Independence Middle School. The IMS PTSO is wrapping up a successful year by treating seventh graders to Rita's and the eighth graders to a morning move-up day and an afternoon of fun during the eighth grade fun day on Wednesday, May 29. They will also host their final spirit night at Rita's on May 30, following the Academic Excellence Award Ceremony at 7:00 PM. And that wraps up the PTO, PTA report. Thank you.
Oh, you do. Terrific. So, a search report?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. We have no report for this evening.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
I'll start with the committee reports. At the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, we had recognition night, and during that meeting, we recognized the maintenance man from Pathfinder, Rob Loestetter, and he received an award from the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Also, I attended the Shasta Function, and where we recognized our two seniors that were you just saw on the screen. I was privileged to be able to hand out all the certificates to about 75 students. So, it was really an interesting Saturday morning with an excellent speaker. Also, at Steel Center, last week, we held our senior recognition night, and that, those seniors have to meet all the requirements of their sending schools before they can also attend that ceremony, and it's held at the Community College of Allegheny County. All of the board members for Steel Center are asked to attend of the 11 sending school districts. I can, and Bethel Park Symphony Orchestra also played that night, so we were real proud of them. But of the 11 schools, sending schools, I represented Bethel. We had a Baldwin and a Brentwood attendant only, and I'm proud to say that we had one superintendent out of 11 attend, and that was Dr. Pascarella. So, we were there to support our school district, at least in full force as we could. It was an excellent night, and to see the students, they were just so excited. The one thing I'd like to say about Steel Center, I'm a little bit disappointed from the standpoint that our numbers dropped by 10 students so far this year who will be attending next year, and we've always been the second highest school. We still are. Baldwin's number doubled. They are sending 175 students to the trades. They know where the jobs are going to be, where the scarcity is, and if we could at least get students who are not college bound but who want to do other careers, I mean, now's the time to do it. The other thing is that there are eight bills pending in the House and Senate right now that with the Allegheny Conference and our workforce development and all the chambers, we will be partnering to get that money to train students and adults who are interested in any of these fields. We've also partnered with another school that will train adults for free for some of these jobs. So, the opportunities are there. We just have to get the word out. So, if you know of anybody, please contact me, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
What can I add?
Yes, Mrs. Buckley.
I want to give a report of what the Pathfinder meetings that you and I attended home in 15-
Sure.
-our annual, or, uh, monthly.
Monthly.
There were many outstanding and dedicated administrators, Mr. Fredo, who was there, and the hard work of the staff and the diversity of the project with the wonderful students. Graduation will be on January 5th, and lastly, pardon my language, lastly, from a facility standpoint, the South Central Area School Committee sincerely thanks the five county school districts for their involvement in the extensive proofing project that's being underway, and we certainly thank the five county school districts for their involvement in such an important, influential effort.
Absolutely. And Bethel Park was the first one to get their check in.
Right. That's right. The O-Jaw.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley. Anybody else on committee reports? Mrs. Dobus, do you have anything?
No.
Nothing?
No, that's not enough.
Public comments then on agenda items. Agenda items only this evening. Any comments on agenda items? Okay, board, since we are doing a combined meeting, what I'll do is I'll start and ask if there are any questions on particular items, and then I'll throw it to our committee chairpeople to then make motions. So, it's been a while. I think November was our last, was it November, our last combined meeting? Anyway, there is one item under the Curriculum Committee. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on this item? Then I will throw that over to you, Mrs. Buckley, to make the motion for the Curriculum Committee.
Item 2019-2020, excuse me.
Second.
Item one under Curriculum, item one under Curriculum Committee has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. Now, we move on to Personnel Committee, and are there any questions on anything under Personnel Committee that can be asked?
Can Dr. Pascarella talk about the new full-time auditorium coordinator? That position, not the person?
Okay.
Can you just talk about that?
Sure. So, recently, as I think we've discussed a few times, we've created a position for auditorium coordinator. This position is going to replace our two stipend positions, going to be more of a full-time position that's not only going to help our students as they are involved in the fall plays, musical, and any other activities, band concerts that might take place, but also coordinate some outside folks who would be coming in to rent the facility and make sure that that goes smoothly as they engage between our faculty and the outside planners, the business office, working with Mr. Keith and the custodial, just to try to make that transition go as smooth as possible, bring in revenue without disrupting what we need to get done as our school district. So, we're pretty excited about the position, and we're hopeful that it will be a success. We're looking for a one-year and one-month contract to get started as soon as possible, and I think that was basically what I, any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other personnel? Then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Rule.
Okay. There are 17 items under Personnel. I move the following. Changes, number one, changes to the extracurricular pay schedule, current positions according to the CBA. Two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program for 2019 to 2020. I'm getting there.
It's a long list. It's a long list.
Yeah, right. Long list. Item three, acceptance of resignations. Item four, approval of staffing changes. Item five, approval to extend an unpaid leave of absence. Six, change of assignments. Seven, appointment of board secretary. Eight, appointment of board treasurer. Nine, appointment of personnel. Ten, approval of 2019-20 salaries for Act 93 administrators. Eleven, approval of 2019-2000 salaries for administrators non-Act 93. Twelve, approval of 2019-20 salaries for non-administrative groups. Thirteen, approval of extended school year staffing. Fourteen, individual memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. And fifteen, approval of substitutes. Sixteen, approval of summer help for custodial slash maintenance. And seventeen, a decision regarding the Pathfinder's report.
Fact-finder.
Fact-finding. Fact-finders report. The board of-
Second.
Oh, okay.
Items one through 17 under Personnel have been seconded by Mrs., have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. All in favor of these items?
Hold on. I want to hold nine C. Three out, and seventeen. Nine C. Three, the part-time special education paraprofessional.
Nine C.
Appointment. Yes.
What is it, nine C?
Nine C. Three.
Nine C. Three.
And seventeen.
Items one through nine B. Nine C. One, two, and four. And 10 through 16 have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. All in favor of these items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
Item nine, nine C.
I need to move nine C. Three.
Nine C. Three.
Second.
I need a second, Means. Item nine C. Three has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. All in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That item carries eight to one, and then 17, Mrs. Rule.
I move item 17, decision regarding the Fact-finders report.
I would like to clarify that we were-
I need a second first.
Second.
Thank you. Item 17 has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means.
I would clarify that we are voting to reject the Fact-finders report.
That is correct. We put that into the minutes at the beginning of the meeting. Any other discussion on this item?
Yes, yes is a no.
Yes is, yes is a reject. Reject, correct. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We have, under Facilities and Services Committee, seven items. Anyone have questions on any of these items?
I do. Number seven, this window protector thing. Who's recommending it? Have our security people suggested it? Have the police suggested it? And for public information, can somebody explain it? Because I don't know that it's on their agenda or the, or that it's explained on their agenda, on the public agenda.
So, what has been recommended to us by our school police force is that in the main areas, main lobby areas, not all windows, but main lobby areas, that we would put the window protectant on. This has been, this has come from their recommendation. Basically, the idea is, is that, one, for visibility, they won't be able to see in as much. Secondly, I think more importantly is, is if you had an active shooter, it would greatly slow them down because it would stop the glass from shattering, maybe not-
I don't think we need to have a discussion on this in public. I'm sorry.
You have the ability to-
To make the purchase.
-take the fact that it's security related, you can discuss that in-
That's the gist of it, though.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there should be a discussion held on this.
All right. Just, just, first of all, I'd like to ask a question of the solicitor. I understand that Act 44 provides us the ability not to discuss things in public.
Yes.
But it, there are certain things that should still be discussed in public. We don't have to discuss a lot of the specifics, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can draw a distinction between, for example, is this purchase being made under the state bid list, you know, the legalities of it versus what in particular safety or security function would it fulfill, which might, which is exactly the reason why now you're allowed to discuss these kinds of things in executive session so that you don't appear any school safety issues.
Okay. And the second question I have for Dr. Pascarella is, and I don't say this tongue-in-cheek, does this protective film do anything for possibly helping keep the building cool? Or does it have any kind of effect on the heating or cooling of the building?
I wouldn't be able to make that statement for sure. I know that it protects visibility and offers, I would assume that it would make some shade, but I wouldn't be able to say for sure that it would.
Okay.
Any other questions on Facilities and Services?
I just had a comment, and then obviously, there's a discussion item there.
Yeah.
Which is related to the voting item number one. So, I don't know if you would like a general presentation, or if you'd like me to give an overview, I can try to do that. And then we do have a gentleman here who would be able to answer any of your questions. It may be best if he starts with the presentation. I could give you a brief overview, but come on up. The general idea why, while he's walking up to the mic here, we met a little bit about the area called Peter Page Park Stormwater Project, which is back behind the football stadium and runs down along Kirkfield. Well, I'll just let you handle it, and then I'll jump in.
Good evening. My name is John Quinlask. I'm the environmental engineer for the municipality of Bethel Park, and as Dr. Pascarella mentioned, we are proposing a flood control project behind the football stadium, as you can see there. And I also have some summaries of that, but I'd like to pass out every one, so you can have your own version of that. It's a little bit smaller, but hopefully. How you doing?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, in summary, with the last few years of flooding, we're on a crusade to develop flood control projects throughout the community. One of the challenges we have is finding available land. Right behind the football stadium, there's a good portion of land. Part of it is owned by the municipality, part of it is owned by the school district. There's a stream running through there that you can see with the green line, and the three oddly shaped symbols there are what we're calling step pools. They would be a three-foot-high berm of soil with a pipe running through it. The pipe would allow the stream to continue to flow, but during flood events, that water would back up behind those berms into three separate pools and create a temporary dam, so to speak. And then when the rain recedes, that water would drain out naturally through the pipes that would go into the stream again. One of the concerns when we met on the site was, is that going to cause flooding in the baseball field or the football field? The football field's about 20 feet higher than what we would build those berms to, so that would not affect the football field. And downstream of the, the last berm there, I keep pointing here because this is what I can see, is the baseball field, and actually, that would provide some protection to the baseball field from future flood events. And this would protect properties downstream along Greenwald Road, Logan Road, and part of Bethel Church. So, that's a summary, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
So, a couple of comments, just that I wanted to make from our walk-through. Mr. Karazi, Mr. Keith, and I went down. I'm no expert, so I appreciate you folks looking into that and writing this up, but one or two thoughts I had on it were, we would have to make sure that it would be reviewed by our solicitor from my recommendation. Couple of concerns I would just have, if there were any sliding or the pipe underneath that you're talking about, the man-made walls with mud would ever fill up or back up, we would want to have something written in, I think, at least from my perspective, to recommend to the board, that you folks, and I know we talked about that, would come out and correct those issues, that it wouldn't then be our job to maintain those if something were to go wrong. And also, although the section behind the football field in particular is a pretty big valley, I was also thinking about making sure that, you know, erosion or anything that might have trees falling into that, that area- that might have trees falling into that, that area would be something that, you know, you would agree to be able to help us out to maintain. Because my biggest fear is, is that we say yes, which I think we should, but then we end up having to try to maintain that, and it could be a large project for the school system. So that's my only couple of comments that I had. I don't know if anyone else does, but questions mainly for him. But those are my suggestions. And you'll see in the motion, if you do decide to vote on this tonight, which is what they're asking, because this process is going to take a while, so to get it going, he was trying to really work to get it, to get it going as soon as possible, to try to prevent future storms from having the effect they did on our community, which we want to get on as soon as we can. But you'll see, it does say pending final review of the solicitor to be able to review that. So those are my couple of comments.
So I guess my question was, who would be responsible for maintenance of that area? You know, like if trees grow up, they start to plug the pipes and things like that?
Sure, sure. So the municipality would assume that responsibility.
Okay.
And bear in mind, these are only going to be three feet high or so.
Yeah.
So we're not really affecting the banks. Even if it fills up with water, it's going to be literally this high.
Okay.
So we're not building this huge structure. That was the first thing we thought of. Well, if we put a big wall there fifteen feet high, we could hold a lot of water. Then we thought, no, let's do this in a smaller scale, and we're still going to hold a good volume of water that way.
Okay.
But yes, the simple answer is yes. We will be responsible for maintenance, and I'd be happy to discuss details with the solicitor.
This map doesn't show gradients as far as going, like four o'clock going up like this here. So I assume this is a hill going up, right?
Correct.
So if we fill up here, it's not going to run down into somebody's yard further down here. This is, I think, uphill.
It's a good valley between the stadium and the other.
So even if it did fill up, we would be just having water go over, and you said that the football field's protected. Now, the baseball field, it's down below. If the water went over, the bank went coming downstream towards where the baseball field is, it would still be about the same flow as if it was going through a pipe then, right? I mean.
Yeah, on an extreme storm event, you're going to have more flow, but that's actually going to protect the baseball field a little more than it is now.
So I think it's, no matter what, we're all going to be protected, and nobody downstream is going to be affected. I mean, the worst is, it's going to have to be cleaned up every so often to make it function properly.
Correct. And my intent would be a couple inspections on a regular basis every year, you know, twice a year, and then after each significant storm event, to go out there and take a look at it, make sure there's no debris blockage or anything like that.
And these are short runs, so if a kid fell in a pipe, it would only be four feet or something?
Maybe, maybe ten feet, yeah. Right, right. And this won't be full of water all the time. It'll be just the normal stream flow that's already there, but when it rains, then it'll fill up, but then it will drain down again. It's just meant to hold water during the, here's how I like to describe it. We're telling the water, you're allowed to flood there so that you don't flood down where the houses are.
Right, exactly.
And temporarily, and it'll just go away after the rain subsides.
Okay, good.
Aesthetically, what's this going to look like? Is it?
It's, with the vegetation in there, it's kind of going to be hard to see. We're going to have to clear some of it to get equipment in. But again, a three-foot-high soil berm, you know, tapered out on one way or another, and it's very, I don't think people will even notice it. Few people that walked through that trail might see it. It could be a minor impact visually.
And with that trail, we're talking three foot, as Ron brought up, a kid falling in or anything, it's not going to be full of water on a regular basis.
Correct. It'll be full, three foot deep when it rains heavily.
But drain relatively quickly after the rain subsides.
Correct, correct. It depends on how long it rains and how intense it rains, but yeah, it'll drain as soon as conditions downstream allow for that.
Will it have, like, anything around it, or will it just be, you know, kind of like a couch? Because a lot of kids play back in there. That's at the end of our streets. A lot of them play back in there.
Right, right.
And was there any chance of them falling down into it or anything? Will it be protected and such?
We're not going to make it any deeper. All we're going to construct is a berm with a pipe going through it. So it's going to be exactly the same valley as you see there right now, basically with a small barrier in three locations to create those three pools.
And how big of a pipe, did you say?
At this point, we're planning on an eighteen-inch, but we have a, this is a conceptual stage, so once we get into full design, we will present that to the school and make sure you folks are in agreement with.
And is there, is there able to be some kind of screen or some kind of barrier placed on the pipe to prevent kids who are playing back here from trying to climb in?
That could be done, yeah. There's ways to do that. And that's, there's an advance to doing that because it collects debris as well and keeps it from clogging up or damaging the pipe.
That's going to make your drainage pipe not work. It'll clog with debris and won't work. I have a question. If the retaining pond fills up and overflows, what happens then? It seems like it'd be more of a mess than not having a retaining pond at all.
If I heard you right, if they fill up, what happens?
If the retaining pond fills up the whole way and starts to overflow in an extreme event, it seems like that would be a worse situation than not having the retaining pond at all, at least on a local basis, I mean.
Well, the advantage is, you're actually detaining water initially, so you're protecting downstream. And then when it does fill up, we'll have an overflow constructed into that berm. So we'll have an area where it can actually, we're telling it where it can overflow.
Okay.
And we're going to direct that right into the same stream channel. So it is, it is going to hold back water, and it's going to be an advantage. So it will be a better situation than without it, where the water just rushed down that valley through that stream with no detention.
I think the maximum flow, the maximum flow that would go over if it filled up, would be no greater than what it is that's coming with all the tributaries to it. You know, if the dam broke, that's a different story. Then you've got maximum.
Yeah, I agree, Ron. I agree. But now your flow's not going down the bed, it's going other places, flowing in a different way. I would highly recommend putting a fence around that whole thing because across from my house, I have a place that backs up, and then when it opens up, there's a tremendous suction pulling things through there. And I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know how to do the fluid dynamics, but I suspect with three feet of water and an eighteen-inch pipe, there's going to be a tremendous suction, and if anybody was around, kid, dog, whatever, it could put them in grave danger.
That's true. And if the project wasn't there, it would be similarly a high-velocity flow, and they'd be in a similar situation. Point taken. With a project there, there'll be a pipe that someone could be endangered by, so we'd have to work through that.
How big the diameter, you said the pipe's going to be?
At this point, we're looking at eighteen-inch. When we get into the exact design, we'll flesh that out more accurately. But so a thirty, thirty-six inch-high berm and an eighteen-inch pipe, you know, about half that.
No, thirty-six, I mean eighteen-inch, I'm saying if somebody quickly gets stuck in there. If it was a big pipe, then we wouldn't even have the fears. I mean, if it's only ten feet long, you go, it's out to go, and.
Right.
You know, but if it's eighteen-inch, I don't know if they would get stuck, you know? So you'd have to then probably lock it up somehow to keep kids from going in there.
Okay.
Eighteen inches, I think it's, that's pretty big.
Awesome. So I hear the concern that safety with the pipe.
If it could get stuck in there, yeah. Like you said, it's only ten feet long, so it's not like that one kid, if you remember last year.
Yes, I do.
You know, he was super lucky, but he went through a long.
Right.
Thing.
Right.
He was lucky to pull through that, so that's what we have to watch out for.
And there's, the other opposite school of thought is, if you have some kind of barricade there that pins somebody against that, and it's harder to get.
Right.
Pull them out. So there's a balance there of how do we approach that? But we'll certainly discuss that and make sure the school board's satisfied with how we proceed.
I think if the cage is big enough around it, if you just put it right at the hole.
Exactly.
Then you've got the suction. But if you build a cage around it, then it's.
Yes.
You know, a lot easier to get out of that suction there.
Exactly, because the water's going around it, not just.
Right, exactly.
I have a question for the solicitor. Would it just simply be simpler for us to cede that land to the municipality?
I mean, that's certainly one option that we can talk about. You could donate it if that is the way that we want to go. I don't know whether or not in particular, there might be a little bit of a complication if we have to subdivide it, but if we're able to simply deed it outright, then it'd be mostly the cost of getting a legal description, excuse me, and a deed prepared, but I'm just not sure, you know, off the top of my head, given the size of the conveyance and what would be in.